Unmute and we're ready.
Is that on?
It's not, but he is.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start on meeting. Got little seven oh one right now. Bob, if you'll do a roll call, please.
Sure. Physically present is Jerry Nelson. Physically present is Neil Beaver. Physically absent is Jeremy Fisher. Physically present is Robert M. Ferguson Jr. Present is Christina Lynn. Also Steve Hicks. Tony Janeway. Also Peggy Myers. And one, two, three, four, five, five? I'm sorry?
Chuck will be back.
Okay, five, five citizens.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the April fourteenth meeting minutes.
My second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye. Physically present. Open issues part.
Um, I CC'd you guys on an email, um, which pretty much sums up our current activity. I've not been good about getting you guys minutes because I'm not being good about typing them. Um, but again, that email pretty much summed up what's going on currently. Planning a fundraiser for July fifth in the afternoon and evening, which will be nicely fit in between Hennepin's on the Bridge and fireworks and, um, plowing forward with, um, that, so.
How many, you're having multiple bands come over there?
I've been.
We don't have that pinned down yet, but Bob's been in charge of that. We initially had an idea, kind of like a battle of bands. I think we're backing off of that and going to have some kind of live entertainment. It may not even be bands, it may be single musicians or, but just some type of, um, music and live entertainment throughout the time. And Bob can.
Yeah, the, I had talked to Terry LaMaster and he was really pumped about it. And I also talked to Jason Gorto over in Peru and we were kind of going together on that. And, uh, the thing is with, uh, battle of bands now, it's not like it used to be in the old days when, you know, you had some sixties rock and roll and seventies rock and roll. Now you have grunge, you got yelling, you got screaming, and it could turn into quite the battle. So, uh, his idea was to, uh, kind of not do that, but possibly get some entertainment. And I am now working on that, uh, through about three or, uh, about three different, uh, groups. And then possibly, uh, getting the, um, Peggy's been working on getting the, uh, Retegebs to have their dance in the street that evening up until the nine o'clock hour. So, uh, yeah, we've been working a lot on that area. Thank you for asking.
Any other que, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Poll track Christina.
Um, I am trying to get ahold of, um, Dwayne. Uh, to talk to him about their perspective on it, of the Lions Club perspective, so I just need to follow up with him.
Okay, thank you. New generator.
I've reached out to two more companies to get quotes and stuff and they won't jump back with me yet.
No quotes yet. Did Jeremy get with you at all what needs to?
He got, he gave me a name of the company and I contacted them and they're on, but doesn't go back with me.
Okay, go. Water tower pipe.
I've done some more testing on that and stuff and I'm reaching out to my inspector to find out what I have to do. I'm hoping that there is a type of pouring unit, but it's not like the rest of the system, how much pouring we have. So I don't know for sure yet if I'm gonna have to dig it all up. I'm talking to my inspectors and stuff and we're discussing what we're gonna have to do or not do and stuff. So as soon as I find that out, I'll let you guys know.
Okay, does he come out, do you guys have any announce?
He's been, he'd come out earlier this year, done my inspection for the year, but I talked to him several times. I'm gonna phone through emails. So, um, like I said, I went up there and tested the water again and stuff and there's a very small trace of pouring in the water. So we don't know for sure yet what the, like a minimum would be on their, on our meters to know for sure if it's gonna produce this amount of trace just by any water in the meter. So I'm talking to him about it and stuff to see what we gotta do. Hopefully I don't have to dig it up, but I know that we done, three years ago, four years ago, we dug up the outside of the water tower where the pipe comes in and we put a patch around the pipe in the foundation to stop any groundwater from coming in. But I'm thinking that's where the most of the water's coming from, so. If we do, we may have to dig a hole up there and repatch that, but I'm hoping that we don't have to bust through the concrete and do all that. I'll let you guys know as soon as I know.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Manhole covers.
Basically, I've got about ten of them that are below grade. I averaged it out to about three hundred dollars a piece, some of them gonna be five hundred, some of them gonna be a hundred or so. But I averaged out about three hundred dollars per manhole that needs to be brought up to grade. Whether or not we do them all now, we do one now, whatever, it is up to you guys on and stuff, but they just are more in my face right now because we've had to locate the whole town with all the Comcast and everything else and stuff. I mean, they've been this way for years, they're in people's driveways that has multiple layers of gravel put on top of them or else and stuff. But I, I think it's something that needs to be done sooner or later.
Okay. So explain to me exactly what has to happen actually.
Basically, they have a ring where the lid is and stuff. You can drive around town and you see the manholes in the, in the asphalt and whatever. In a lot of driveways and a lot of tree lawns and stuff like that, they're not there. So we have to dig down and we can take the lid off and they make a ring that goes underneath the lid. Because before we had to dig a hole about this big around to raise everything up. Now we don't have to, it's a twenty-four inch hole. Pull the lid off, put the ring on, put the lid back on. And then the rings are various thicknesses to depending on how deep it is in the ground.
And they average, how much, three hundred two?
I, I guesstimated per manhole is only about three hundred bucks a piece if we don't all tend them right now. Like I said, they vary, the rings vary anywhere from a hundred and seventy-five to five hundred bucks. But I didn't physically go around and measure every one of them. I just done an estimation that it's gonna be roughly three hundred dollars. About three thousand dollars. So.
What would this be coming out of?
May I ask a question, please? Okay, uh, are we talking about the manholes for the sewers? Is that where we're coming out of sewer? Uh, one of, if I may, okay. Will that cause any place in town where we're going to have to come in with, uh, asphalt? Because it was raised too high or will they all be flush?
They're all in the tree lawn or in the gravel. There is one that is in the road that I'm not gonna worry about right now. It's still accessible, it just gets dirt, more stuff along the top of it and stuff. So no, these are all in tree lawn and gravel, they're either in grass or gravel.
Okay. So these will be coming out of sewer and, uh, I already looked in that area. And we do have money in that area for that project.
And you're comfortable there, the ten of them, these are the ones that need the most?
Yes.
I'm thinking approving up to three thousand dollars, because like you said, I mean, if it's, you know, if we get into those five hundred, you know, but so I'd make a motion to approve three thousand dollars to go towards the manhole covers.
I'll second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Valve exerciser.
I've reached out to three companies on that. Two companies actually do not sell valve exercisers, but they will come in town and exercise the valves for us. Each one of them, one company quoted this, it was like a hundred and one dollars a valve. The other one was more like a hundred and thirty-five valve. Uh, roughly, we have around a hundred valves in town, but I'm not gonna say that every one of them need to be exercised because I know of forty that are going to hydrants that we have physically determined. So that bill may be a little cheaper than what I originally said on that and stuff, but I reached out to another company about us purchasing a valve exerciser and he hasn't gotten back with me yet on the cost of that.
How much would they cost, do you think?
What's that?
The valve exerciser?
Was that like maybe ten grand last time?
Yeah. I got a, I got a quote for a handheld deal, but basically like a giant up impact that runs either off a battery or, or like a generator. And it was over ten grand. The one that I'm wanting has got an arm that would attach to like our back trailer. And it runs off a hydraulics or whatever, that's the one I'm trying to get. It's got a little more oop to it, a little more torque than what the handheld ones do, just in case we need it. And, and I would rather not spend ten thousand dollars on something that may or may not work or get this one that I know is gonna work, it should have enough power to do it. If it don't, then there's nothing out there that's gonna do it other than getting up and replacing valve.
Yeah, because this is something you almost have to do every year, is that correct?
They want us to do it every year.
So basically, why don't you find out the cost of that one?
Yes.
Because it's, in the long run, it'd be a lot easier.
Well, and that's, that's what I asked the other two companies, Curly and, uh, Envy Simpson and stuff. And yeah, basically it's, depending on how many valves we do and stuff, but it's, I mean, ten to twelve grand every year.
So we were paying for itself in the first year, basically, so.
I did reach out, talked to North Manchester guys and stuff, and the biggest valve that we have in town is an eight inch valve. North Manchester has twelve inch valves and stuff, and to replace one of those would be ten to twelve thousand dollars, just replace the valve. They bought a valve exerciser and stuff and they were able to get all those working.
Okay.
So it is a, a tool that I think would benefit the town and I think in the long run would save the town money.
Yeah, I would say move forward, I mean, look at what it was gonna cost and get it written in black and white for us.
Right.
Because if it's gonna pay for stuff in one year, basically, it would be better to go that direction.
Does LaGro have one?
No. Manchester's got one and I asked Manchester about us using it or running off of them, no. Walbash, I don't know with any of the guys at the water plant in Walbash and stuff, but I can reach out to them, but no, LaGro doesn't have one at all.
Yeah, I asked a question.
Yes.
Um, I, I kinda got on and looked a little bit today, not, not really knowing what I was looking for, but I just kinda Googled it and seen what I could see. And I saw, I saw one that, are you wanting one that like runs on a, uh, gas powered engine?
No, no, so the, well.
The one I found, the one I found had a Honda engine. Uh, I don't know that, I don't even know the uh, Z O S, Z O T O, I think, Zoto? And, um, I know that it had, I couldn't find the torque on it. I knew it was probably well over the four hundred torque, but, uh, and it was on one of those pull things that you could pull along behind, uh, and it was, uh, and again, I don't know that much about it, to even know that it was a good one. I had seen it was about ten thousand, uh, six hundred and seventeen, and I didn't know where you were, what kind of numbers you were finding. Unfortunately, I, I forgot to say something to you before the meeting, or else I would have.
Turco is the company that I've found so far, and like I said, they have a valve exerciser that's on a boom arm that holds in and out.
Mm-hmm.
That hooks up to our existing trailer, they also have it to where you can put it on their own trailer. But I've been talking to the guy about hooking it to our back trailer and that way we've got one unit that does two things. Instead of having a separate motor and trailer and all that. So it's got eight hundred foot pounds of torque where they make Hydrant Buddies. There's a couple of ones that's four hundred foot pounds of torque and Blue Book, the company we use a lot of, they have them and stuff, but they're about six grand.
Oh.
And they're only four, four hundred foot pounds of torque and I'm just afraid that four hundred may not be enough and I don't wanna spend.
You got that, right? You have that much torque, right?
Well, and that's what I, I am.
He'll call you. He'll call you. He'll give you an Angela call.
So, I mean, I've been doing a lot of looking and stuff, but I haven't come up with any hard numbers yet for anything other than the two companies that would come in and do the exercises for us.
I think it'd be a worthwhile investment, Toby's.
Right, and I don't think, personally, I don't think that six hundred or six thousand dollars or even ten thousand dollars is out of the ordinary. And I, and, and I, and from what I see, uh, we've got that kind of money in, in water that we can spend that. So, but again, that's up, that's up to you.
That money regardless of having another company come in or?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, because the first year is gonna pay for itself and then, but we're not gonna wanna, we're not gonna let North Manchester use ours either.
Town hall air conditioner, this building.
Did you guys get your packets? I, uh, we got four quotes and the quotes range between,
Five thousand two hundred and twenty-five and ten thousand four hundred and sixty-five?
Yeah. So, it's up to you guys what you wanna do. We went, yeah, the five, the five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, that, um, they had tax on that and I just crossed off the tax. Because we're not paying tax, uh, and then, and then that other was five thousand two hundred and twenty-five. We went last year, uh, without an air conditioner, just because we didn't have the, I didn't feel like we had the funds for, for that, but, uh, this year I'd like to, um, purchase that, we can't go through another summer with ninety degree weather or ninety degree, uh, temperatures in the, in our office.
Is there a chance we're gonna have the colder winter or colder summer?
Uh, if we did, I'd let it go for another year.
Have we used any of these companies before?
Yes, uh, we have used Day. And I think Day is the only one that we have used before. Before, we've always used, um, we've always used, uh, Craig, Parker has done everything. And since Craig is no longer doing a lot of this anymore, which he shouldn't be, it's made us all of a sudden try to find new people. And, uh, Day came out and they did something la, uh, a year before last and put some, uh, Freon in it and made it work for the, got us through the summer. But then we found out last year that he could not do that with that particular unit. The only difference is the, uh, let's see.
Does Days include a five-year warranty? I don't see that listed on theirs.
I didn't see it either, to tell you the truth.
The rest of them include that, but.
The five-year warranty, is that just some parts and service?
Parts and labor warranty.
I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you know the one that impressed me most. Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't mind Climate Makers if that's what you guys wanna use. Uh, and I'd never heard of, uh, Wurlarsky before, but, uh, they impressed me the most, uh, but again. Uh, yes, they are, and it was a difference of like fifty, fifty-some dollars. They had two guys come out, uh, Climate Makers did not send anybody. They, they used the, the numbers that they got last year. And, uh, again, I had no problem with Climate Maker, they didn't, uh, they didn't, they just looked at what they had last year and didn't come out to, uh, uh, look at anything. So with that said, it's up to you guys what.
What is the quote from the one to do here? Cause I've seen their trucks quite often.
Who, Wurlarsky?
Yeah.
Five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight. Thirty-seven required to start the job, thirty-seven hundred. Well, if you were most impressed with them, I'll make a motion to approve the Wurlarsky's quote of five thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll get started on it right away.
Tony, you're up to that.
I've got six houses right now that are, talk to me or talk to the town hall about low water flow. Um, I have not went out and tested any of them yet. I can test all of them to determine if it's gonna be on the street side or on town side or city side to know whether water low flow is. My problem is if I go test them, then I have to fix them if I find out it's bad on our side. Now, I know that the funds in water is low. The last one that we had dug out here and stuff, or, uh, more here, I believe you made, was between three or four thousand dollars. So I'm guesstimating that all six of these, if they are all on our side, because most of them you have to get through the street to get to the main, all that, so asphalt repair, whatever else is gonna be, I reckon, three or four thousand dollars per address. So I have not only not tested any of them yet, but I wanted to dump to you guys first to see what we're gonna do.
Are they all on the same side of town or they all buried?
There is, uh, I don't have all the addresses here, I know there's another one down here by Dick, his next door neighbor. Um, there's two on Benton Street, there's one on Allen Street, no, there's two on Allen Street. So they are on this side. But, uh, there's three on Walnut. That people's so concerned, there was a guy come down, spring clean up, was talking to me about it. There's new homeowners here in Rowan that was, uh, Steve Hicks's dad's old place. They turned the water back on over there and they've got low flow and I physically went into the house and seen this.
So they always had it, because there was people living there before?
Well, and that's the problem with this and stuff is because with our water, we got rust in our water, it gets built up in pipes, especially when the pipes are not being used. A lot of these houses are over people that don't use too much water. So we can fix them now, but to say, I know Bruce told me that he fixed Dick's several years ago. To say that it's gonna be a five-year fix, a ten-year fix, a two-year fix, I don't know how long it would take for the pipe to get replaced again. But because of these people, and, and even if I fix our side, if they've got old galvanized or anything else in their house, they could plug right back up. But I know that if I physically go out and test them, because the state minimum is five gallons a minute. And we have an apparatus where we pull the meter out, we put an apparatus in there, stopwatch, and we test it and it counts the gallons. If I go out and test them, then I have to fix, if it's less than five gallons a minute.
If they are below the state minimum though, I do think it is, it is our responsibility to take care of that.
Right.
Um, is there, is there any other preventative maintenance that we could do though to ensure that that doesn't happen? I mean, is there anything that?
What we're doing now, basically with the phosphate that we're injecting into the water now, it's supposed to coat the pipes and stuff to keep them slick and keep contaminants from building up on them. But like I said, these, these have been going on for, they've been in the phosphate for about four years, I believe. So, but to say that this is going to reoccur, I about guarantee it's gonna reoccur.
Did we not send out to the residents, I thought I remembered, asking what type of pipes you had in your house?
We done an inventory on them and stuff, a lot of people don't know what they're talking about.
Can we check that out first?
Unless they're, unless they're willing to let me come in the house.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah. Well, I know over Steve's, over Steve's dad's old house over here on Allen Street, I went into his house and he's got everything. There's galvanized, there's, there's PVC, there, there's copper, there's PEX, there's everything in there. So, I mean, the line coming in is galvanized, which could very well be a restriction to, he's got an old gate valve that you gotta screw all the way in or screw all the way out. Those are bad for breaking down. But like I said, I pulled the meter out of the street, I can test it to know if it's on our side coming in or if it's on their side and stuff. But like I said, I can fix our side, but I can't fix theirs.
Well, I mean, it's important that we take care of our customers, but, um, one thing is, do you have any, out of all of those, one that has been complaining the most that we should look at first or do we now?
May, may. First, first of all, a, as a homeowner myself and as you guys are also, if you guys had three gallons coming into your house, you, you're not gonna care how many times you complain, you want that fixed. And I think, I think it's important that we take care of our clients. The, and as you said before, and as Tony's alluded to, we still can't guarantee how long that's going to be good, because if that customer uses a minimum every single month, if I'm right by listening to Tony and Tony and I talking, it's not gonna take long for that to happen again.
Yeah.
And so now, but there's nothing that we can do on our side to fix that. And so now, but there's nothing that we can do on our side to fix that. Because. We can't make them use more water.
I mean, you know, there is something we can do on our side to make it better, but. The town can't afford it and that's a filtration system. To take all the iron and everything out of the pipes. But that's millions of dollars that nobody's gonna. Lot of towns don't do. They just deal with the rusty water and stuff because it is wild water. Look, Row lucky enough, they're on a seam of limestone, so they've got real good water. But Walbass has got rust. Um, they Manchester's got rust and they use a salt. Which is also a filtration system that they use and stuff, but they have they build in the softener for the whole town.
I know that the one thing that they did do at my house, because I had the same problem at one time, and this has been be way before. I took this position. Uh, and uh Craig unhooked mine. After uh Bruce. Put in the cleaned out the one and then had it running through my meter. Craig left it open for I know a good hour, two hours, and the water coming out of there was just, I mean, it was dark. Just because. Of the little bit of water that had been running through my house. And so uh I don't know, is that something that that we could do? He took it. He took it off right before it went to the house. Uh, and then he ran it out on the ground. Is that something that we could have them do to? Say, look, we wanna help you. We wanna do this, but you're gonna need to do something too. So that we don't think you're gonna have that problem. Right away. I don't know. I'm just I'm just I'm just throwing some stuff out. No.
We pull it at the meter and we flush our side out and then we just. My dick over here, I told him, I said, if you run your garden hose. Because it has no aeration on it or anything like that, your little string on your faucets and stuff. Or your bathtub. If you run either one of those and stuff, it'll help flush things through the system, but. There's no guarantee of any of it. So even if you disconnect it at the house. And run it, all you're doing is cleaning the line from the house back to the meter pit.
I do think it's important that we address these concerns people have and to check them out and see if they are below the state minimum and they have to get fixed then. And I would like, you know, maybe there's some kind of campaign we can run of people to run their hoses more.
They are on summer rates right now. Uh, I thi- I think we should take care of the six. The but I think Tony, I think Tony would agree and and you guys probably also. That once we do these six and the word gets around town, everybody's gonna want their water checked. Uh, to see if they've got five gallons coming out a minute. Would you agree? How he knew that, I don't know, but he said, I've got three gallon a minute.
We just need to have him go around town.
And then do this. Um, so yeah, I I think I believe that we should take care of those six. And then.
Six this year, right?
And then play it by ear as best we can. I don't know what else. Do you have any other suggestions, Tony? No, there's six. There's six total.
There's there. I've got six complaints right now. I just I'll go through the list and test them and. Hopefully it's on their side, not our side, but I ain't no guarantee that, cause I just know from past experiences that it's on both sides.
Because I don't know and I don't understand how that one machine works that we just bought, does it does that? Have pressure that blows through that we could do that with? Not for water, only for sewer.
That that machine we bought is more of a sucker than it is a blower.
Marvelous.
Moving on?
Yes.
We do. I mean, it does have a power washer on the side to be able to clean like manholes and water. Any kind of jetting and stuff, it is not sufficient enough to do any kind of.
Are we able to rent something to do that? Are we able to rent something that would do that with? Okay, alright. Thank you.
What else you got for us, Tony?
Boy, do we have to approve any amount for that because. We're gonna have to do at least if there's six of them, their average of.
You gotta give him, yeah, you gotta. Or it's twenty-four thousand. That's a lot of money.
You're not gonna get them all done in one month, so let him do.
Right, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Are you gonna do two a month?
Well, I'm gonna test all six of them this month.
So we don't need to approve anything yet, cause there's nothing to.
Great idea. I think that's a great idea.
Uh, the pole barn that we store all our tractors and trucks and everything else in, it faces towards the full drag. It's a bad location because it's facing the south. All the windows in the garage doors, they're all dry rotting and falling out. They're all cracked in ways. One's falling out right now. I called uh. I forget the name of the company in Portway and stuff, the ones that actually put the doors in and stuff. Two hundred dollars a window. There's twelve windows total. He told me you could do one at a time or you could do all twelve of them at a time. It doesn't matter to him. But basically two hundred dollars a window and. Like I said, and one of them's cracked right now, but one of them is actually falling in. So and unfortunately, it's because of the way the building is facing. It's facing towards the south, so it gets grabbed on all the time.
And they're glass, is that correct?
They're plexiglass. And the frame around them is like a rubber or plastic type thing and it's just dry rotten. When I had my business and stuff, my dad lived on the south side and his house faced the south and I done four doors. One year over there where the little frame around the glass just melted and run down the door. It's just.
How old are these doors?
Two thousand and seven, I believe, was when the pole barn was built.
Do we need to have these windows in the doors?
No, I don't need the windows in there, not one. But to replace the panel to get rid of the windows, it's gotta be more expensive. I mean, I can board them up, but getting over three.
We're looking at uh. After replacing all of those two thousand four hundred dollars. I can. Uh, I can take the money out of uh MVH. Out of uh property repair. And uh currently we have seven thousand dollars in there and we haven't spent any money out of that. Uh, this year so far. I do not wanna take it out of equipment. Uh, it would have to be out of uh building or property repair. So now it's now it's up to now it's up to y'all if you want to approve the uh. There's money there.
And um. You said that we didn't necessarily have to do all right now. I mean, is there are they all? You're saying they're all cracked though?
Every one of them's cracked. Every one of them's got, basically there's two panels. Bl- or plexiglass on the outside and one on the inside. I'm talking about the outside is falling in. But every one of them, if you go down and look at them, every one of them's got fractures about this big on all of them. Inside and out, just because of the sun baking the plastic and making them brittle. And like I said, no, I have to, I asked the guy if we could do one now. Two later, ten later, whatever it's something. He said it didn't matter to him. We figured it in this cost. The company's out of four one.
So then we do like six of them, that's half of them.
Yeah, there's three. There's three windows per door and there's four doors.
So I'm I'll make a motion to spend twelve hundred. We'll do six of them.
A second.
All in favor?
And we will take that money out of MVH and we'll take it out of property.
Uh, the bleachers, we purchased some bleachers for up at the ball field and stuff, P-ball field. Um, basically, like we discussed and stuff, I got them. They're up there now. They were twelve hundred bucks for three sets. I looked online before I went and bought them and they're averaging about thirty-six hundred per set.
I think it's an excellent. I think it was an excellent find. I think it was an excellent buy. And yes, we can take that out of the uh baseball uh park baseball diamond. I have money in there. We have uh. About twenty-three. Got about twenty-three thousand in there. So yeah, that I have no problem with that. And uh, but I would like. I think that if I'm not mistaken, Tony purchased that with your personal credit card. I would like you guys to make sure that in here you say that uh. Uh, that I am reimbursing Tony the twelve hundred dollars. For. The uh bleachers i- if if that's.
I'll make a motion to approve reimbursing Tony for the twelve hundred dollars for the bleachers. Uh, the only thing I'd ask is if we get some kind of whether to stencil or mark it in some way as as those are owned by the town of Rowan.
I'll get something on there. You want me to do the other two sets that are per thing?
Yeah, everything that's town Rowan, so that later Christina doesn't have to worry about it.
And I too would like to have uh uh an invoice, please. Some some sort of an invoice, preferably the one that you got from him.
I did not do anything like that, but I paid cash for it. I've got a piece of paper that my wife wrote out and he signed it. With his name on there, so I can give that to you. And then I've also got where she printed out on the computer that the town of Rowan's gonna buy. Three sets of bleachers off me for over a buck. If that'll work.
Love to have that signature one. That would be perfect. Very happy.
Anything else for us?
Uh, next week I am, if everything works out, I'm gonna take a few days off. I've got a contractor coming to work on my house. And I wanna be there to assist on some of the additions that we're doing and stuff. I know Dana's at class on Monday, so I will come in and do what I need to do on that. And Thursday. We have the expo that we go through every year at uh Akron and it helps gets us to see you and whatever else. Other than that, the only thing I've got is an alley over here between church and Arnold Street. I've had a few people come to me now telling me that it's getting run it up. But it is an alley that has not been maintained. But there's new homeowners over there that are using it as a driveway to get into the backyard. So my question to you is, do you guys own any graded gravel? Because it's just one people, it's one home.
Find out. Find out if it's the one that's got the big hump. Cause that could cause, that would be tougher.
Where is it located?
Is it his old place?
Oh, is that where it is?
It's the one up on the hill that uh.
Oh, the yellow one? The two-story yellow.
Where Rick used to live at. Just just to the north of Rick's old house yesterday.
So the alley runs north and south? I was thinking of an alley.
I was I was still.
That's what I was worried about.
That's what that's what I was asking.
To their backyard. And we talked about it a few years ago because someone else was in the process of buying that house and they had a. They were gonna sell it to a lady that was handicapped and she wanted to be able to park in the backyard also. Because the the unimproved road that your driveway is, honestly, they're awesome. But like I said, for us to do it properly, it needs to be dug out, it needs to have base foot down and then it has smaller gravel foot on top of it. But I don't know, you guys didn't wanna do it last time for one person, so I didn't know I'm asking now. But I've had two people that properties on each side of this alley are complaining that it's rotten.
The golden park in front, is that correct?
Yes, they can.
Cause I have no idea what that would cost them.
The people that are using the alley, they haven't come to me and complained. This is just people that share the property on each side of the alley.
On each side, so that would be the people in Arnold, right?
Somebody on Arnold, somebody on Adams.
I think let's let's kinda table that one so we can kinda look at that. I'd like to see what it looks like.
And did you get an estimate?
We've got the gravel down there for me to do it, but I mean, it's like I said, to do it properly, to turn it into a true valley, but. It's not going anywhere. It's just going to go backyard, so.
So we're just making it my driveway, basically on an alley that's used.
And they're. I can take the gravel that we have down here right now. I can go up there and grade it down and put the smaller gravel on there to to create it, but. If it ever starts getting a lot of traffic and stuff, it'll just sink in and turn the motor.
So there won't be any, there won't be any cost of grading it down. Except your time.
Yeah, I mean, I can I can go under where the tractor that we have and grade the ruts out of and stuff and then. Take a truck with gravel and go up there with two, three loads and spread it down through there and make it look pretty, but.
I mean, the the town does own all the alleys, correct?
The only thing I would say is consider any precedent that you're setting.
Here's the thing. The ones on Arnold, how could they use it anyway? Because if it's where.
It's on Adams.
Right, but you said the people on Arnold and Adams.
Yes. Because they mow to it. Before, nobody ever go through there, so it was just part of their yard.
Yeah, but if I remember right, the ones on that on Arnold, there's a big drop off.
Yeah, you're talking church. I'm sorry, you're talking, yeah, Arnold. But you got church street that's the side that Lakewood lives on.
Yes, but there. There's people that live on Adam Street that their yard is in the alley. And then there's people that own property on Arnold Street, but their yard is in the alley. It's always been maintained by just mowing. Now people are driving through there and creating ruts, so when people were mowing and trying to maintain their yard, it's their own ruts.
I know people on the on Arnold side, I mean, they actually built into the alley.
You're right. I mean, who stops that?
A lot of, yeah, there's a lot of.
There's a lot of alleys. Unimproved streets, Aunt May Mines, Walnut, it's unimproved.
I'm worried, cause I get people all the time talking about their alley. They're wanting, so the town gives it up or for us to maintain them. And you start doing this.
It's just gonna create problems.
Well, I did see where people was driving it. I wanted to do was driving it, but that's very slim for them. It's probably they're not made of hole yet.
There is driveways and that's the reason I got the gravel down there. There is gravel. There are alleys that I do go through and grade. And put gravel down. I've done half a dozen or whatever in the last year or so.
That were already.
The this one is, like I said, was just grass and. It was bought up a couple of years ago from a different person, but now these people are actually using it and they're not complaining, but.
Let's do it as is.
So doesn't matter to me. I'm done.
Sure. Just start off this one. Um, Mr. Griffith did go to court for the county's case against him. The judge issued him forty-five more days. Mr. Griffith was complaining that he was unable. Mr. Griffith was complaining that he was unable to do any work on his house, on his yard so far, cause when the old school was torn down, that caused water to flood into his yard. And only his. Um, so he has forty-five days. They ask, oh, he has to show he's done improvements, which has been done so far. Um, the other houses that I got the county looking at, those owners actually called him and is supposed to be working with them. They're keeping track of that and I'm keeping track of the two. I am gonna, now this week, actually start doing the ordinance violations in the town. All that heavy rain we got, I kinda held off, cause I'm, you know, my own house I had to mow, so. But I do have several houses already written on my radar to go talk with them. One, I actually, they asked me about spring cleanup. I said, oh yeah, just get hold of Tony, cause they have anybody to get the stuff down and they didn't do any of it. So now they're gonna see me, so um, and several more. So that will be done this week and hopefully I can take care of them without having to go through the ordinance part of it.
Do we have a list of the ones that you are now working on at the county?
Yeah, I emailed you. Besides Griffith, there's actually Griffith, one other up there, by him. And then two more here in the town too. So it's four that met the county's ordinance violations. So unsafe houses and stuff. Let's see, I responded to several calls in our county and Miami county, but one of the worst was a personal injury accident by Disco. County officer didn't hear the call. I did, I go up there and they finally did show up. The guy was intoxicated off of hunting meth and some different things and was gonna leave before I got there, but he decided to stay for me. He went to jail that day, so he flipped his car over, so I helped him for about an hour or so up there. Been doing training for the new record management system I spoke to you guys about that you approved. So I had training last week, uh, two different days. It looks like they're gonna start installing stuff maybe to end of June, I believe. I'll have complete control over our system, so I can set up how Rowan wants it. So it's what we want, not what anyone else wants, so. And it will be a lot better system for record management and stuff like that. I mean, it even has a section for logging, uh, our equipment stuff and who has it, where is it at, checking it out. I mean, it's a whole complete record management system for that. Dollar general, I'm gonna try to locate the manager tomorrow over there and talk to her or him. Is it her or him? Introduce myself to him.
She's, lives east of I love it.
And you said. Yeah, so, so I'll find out for sure and everything. I have a lot of people wanting to know when it's gonna be opened up. Um, I had to order new pants, actually twice, cause I lost more weight. I'm down eighty pounds cause of my diet, so I'm trying to stay healthy. Because of that, um, I need to order ballistic panels for my carrier. I gotta get new ones for sheriff's department too. They weren't out at the end of this year. The carrier still works, cause I can adjust it easily. Usually what I did was this asked the county and they give me the old panels. I just want here, cause like the one I got now is ten years old. Warranty's five years on them, but you know, they still stop bugs. But anyway, so those aren't gonna work for me here, so I was wanting to go get some quotes from a place down by Indy called Nelson's. That's where a lot of people are going to now. Then bring them back. Yeah, I know, that's always a Nelson. But bring back quotes so you guys take a look, cause they'll be probably more than five hundred dollars, but I would just take the old ones from the sheriff's department, but they're loose too. And you want your panels snug. Loose makes the, the impact worse and then you get internal damage worn where you could, so. I had stuffing, I got rid of it, so.
Since you've lost so much weight, I mean, we are, we have less town marshal now, so will that be affecting your salary at all?
But we went by height, not by weight.
But you didn't get taller.
I suggested to the old sheriff one time, pay us by height, get all yours, cause you get more workout in it. He didn't agree. Mason phrase doesn't agree.
You just walk faster.
I am cross-training with the sheriff's department, so if I'm working for sheriff or that training does count for me here. Like today, we had a field day and I got some of my mandates done. On the days I don't work sheriff's department, they have training for helping and that I do for, as a Rowan marshal, so, but it crosses over. So where I was getting there, like last week I was working for Rowan, so I got eight hours of training, left had twenty-four, so I ensure every year I have more than enough training and mandates. Um, going on that, I need to do my pistol order for ammunition. Um, the place I usually go through has a, for, I usually give about five hundred rounds, cause I shoot a lot. But it's like three hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, I gotta email into them to get me a official thing. I believe we have, we haven't used any money out of the ammunition I have reserved. Uh, but like, I don't have to, usually under five hundred, I don't worry, but I always like bringing it up though when I see terminal digits, so. If I don't mind me getting some quotes and bring them to the next being and or if it's under, is that price, just go ahead and ordering it honestly, cause it will get used up fast. Let's see, I wanna, if the board's okay with it, um, I wanna try to get a portable breath testers called P B T. I've never had one before for here. If we happen to get the liquor store down there and stuff, I foresee possibly happening, be able to use one, so there's an Norfolk Southern grant that we actually can apply for for small stuff like that. I would like to go ahead and just apply for it to see if I get lucky and get it or not. I like money not coming from here if I can help it.
Did you say, did you say Northport?
Norfolk. Yeah, you can, if you're in their area, so many miles away from like their main track line, you can go for this grant.
Okay, thank you.
So the wife actually found the grant for me. Besides that, I still got birds in my house. I can't get rid of it. I was making the truck look bad, so Neil, don't look at the truck.
Yeah, you got it.
Now that it's nicer, I can actually wash it at home. Usually I run the wall bash and I just pay the money, just wash it myself there, so. I'm afraid of it, I fall down on it. And I've sent you various emails, just get everybody up to date on some stuff, so. But anything the board needs besides ordinance violations?
Not against ordinance. I have a question. I mean, cause, and I've had a couple, some people in town have mentioned to me. Is it possible now that we're getting warmer weather, schools are gonna get out, to do some night patrol?
I do do that.
Okay, I, I mean, I just didn't know.
I didn't do it. I'm the same way.
Reason I say it is because I even like, I've sat on the porch. I know there's one person down to my house.
White car.
Yep, you got it. At least fifty mile an hour before. You get to the end. But a lot of motorcycles, I heard, you know, I mean, just.
And people call me home and I'll jump the truck.
Sunday evening, something like that, but anyway, as long as I can answer their questions, say yes, he is.
Yeah, winter time, I don't usually do as much of tests, but now we're getting in spring and summer, yeah.
It's gonna be a, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I got ordinances and stuff to do. I usually work the daytime hours and then I try to work uh, later night shift after that, so. And there's that one email I sent you guys, that stuff's going on too, so I kinda try not to be out at night, just so I don't do any scootings, so.
Right, okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
And give them my number. They got stuff. So that's what, usually I'll get phone calls, um. It wasn't Peggy. Somebody called me, he was, had motorcycles across here on Washington Street at the end and they were riding out in the Norfolk Southern. And then the property I came in, I knew it was when they were right away and put stop to it. They're being idiots, so.
So you, you'll go around and let, do some of the ordinances during this weekend stuff and cause I know I've seen, there's one place in town where their vehicle is up on Jackson, has been up on Jackson.
Yeah, they, that one he wrecked. And they got rid of the one out back that they had, which I don't know where they took it to, but they're trying to do the work theirself on the one. They actually are progressively doing work on it. They really are. And I was planning on going to talk with them and talk with mom and see how long they're gonna be. Cause I understand if you don't have the money, you have a mechanic do it, you can try to do yourself. I try to be understanding with that. Maybe sometimes push that understanding.
That's kind of a direct walk to the new Dollar General and especially sometimes kids like to uh, maybe play. Or mess around with us, something like that, you know what I'm saying?
I tell everybody to go by the water tire and play. Where I tell them to, I said it's fine.
Well, you know, you know what I'm saying, I'm curious to see what might be.
But no, you know, no, I won't start getting more like nachos now we're getting in spring and summer, so. But yeah, give them my number.
Okay, I will. Great, sir.
See, I have one thing to add to this discussion, earlier discussion. Up there at the school, that uh, Nangrip's property, uh, Poe's property, Johnny Cisco's property, every year in springtime, it is wet. It stays wet all, all spring. And I'm talking noticeable water that you walk through. So there is a stormwater issue up there. Johnny calls me every year complaining about it and stuff, so. Not to help Dan with any of his issues, but his yard stays flooded.
I wouldn't call it flooded, cause I've been on Dan's yard many times and it's not been flooded.
I've been back here before where it's, couldn't have two foot deep.
Out front?
No, out back.
Well.
Separating him from Cisco.
Yeah.
And even the Poe property and stuff, I've been over there before and stuff when they first moved in. And it was just nothing but water back there and I'm, I'm a foot, foot and a half deep.
I honestly have never seen it like that, so I believe you a hundred percent.
Jamie mowed the property and I, I, Jamie's brother, mowing it now or somebody's up there mowing it. They have to mow certain areas because it stays.
Talking about Johnny's property.
Yes, yes.
So Griffith's property, he's not mowed.
No, 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 no. No, he don't, he don't mow that. Yeah, I told you back there that there's a lot of water.
I just never seen it. And the court's handling it, so Griffith actually, you got to give him forty-five days. So it's to be the middle of June and he has to report. Ryan comes through and checks it every, when he's up north giving his checks, he comes by and checks all the properties and then I'll also talk with him when I see stuff, so. Okay?
Yep, thanks, sir. Christine.
No, it has occurred to me in all this time, I have never said, oh, this is going on and I need five hundred bucks or that's going on and I need two thousand dollars. I don't.
I'll make a motion to approve it though.
Okay, good.
What did you say?
I'll make a motion to approve it though.
I, I, I do need some work done on my building.
That's the city's problem.
Bob, you're next, anything?
I do. Uh, I got a couple of things. I got a, um, I'd like to get permission from the council. I haven't had a chance to talk to either uh, Tony, uh, nor have I talked to uh, Steve. But uh, it looks as though Xfinity is ready to uh, start rolling out for businesses. They have, they haven't uh, yet and uh, like to switch, uh, be able to switch to Xfinity uh, for the plant, for town hall and for the marshal. I know that one of the things that I'm going to do, with your permission, I would like to get rid of uh, Bright Speed altogether. And I think what I can do is I can purchase a cell, cause I, I know that uh, Xfinity does not have landlines yet. But if I purchased a uh, iPhone, uh, cheap one uh, for about a hundred and fifty dollars, I can get an iPhone eleven. And then have that number transferred onto that. I'm not sure about businesses yet, but I know at the home, I only pay forty dollars a month. That will really cut our price down as far as what we pay in Century Link right now. I haven't talked to Steve, but I don't imagine Steve has a lot of calls on the number from Century Link, if he has any at all.
Yeah, you uh, not worth, usually it's a lot of fan calls.
And mostly what we would have, he would still have his uh, cellphone. And I do, I would not like to change that at all. We wanna keep that uh, because we've got the hotspot and everything and I will, and it's working well and I'd like to keep it like that. Same thing with Tony and his crew. I'd like to keep uh, their cell phones exactly the same. But I hadn't been able to talk to Tony and I don't imagine you get a lot of calls on Century Link or Bright Speed. There you have it. So what we're doing is we're paying for a phone down there that's unhooked. So I think, I think that would be a, I, it's going to save the town a ton of money if we go to that. And so I would like the permission of the council to as soon as it becomes available for us just to make the switch.
But we need to make a motion to approve the purchase of the phone.
Oh, okay. Yeah, probably. Uh, a purchase of, sorry, I don't have.
So if we get some quotes for that.
I'll get, I'll get quotes for that. But in the meantime, I'll make sure that, cause it's gonna, it's gonna take at least a month anyway. So I'll get those quotes for that, but I would like, go ahead and get the permission to switch everything over to Xfinity as soon as I can.
Do we know what that costs for the business for?
I do not.
Yeah, they don't have a package yet. What are we paying Bright Speed?
Oh my gosh. Uh, everything together, uh, probably about uh, four hundred and some dollars a month. It's, it's huge. It's a huge amount, because I have, I have a phone line for Steve. I have a phone line for our office and I have a phone line for the uh, plant. And then I have internet for Steve, the plant and my office. And so it is a huge amount that we pay. And it'd be nice just to get rid of all of that and, and I, I know that we'll be saving a ton of money.
It'll be faster service.
Much faster service, but I'm, I'm right now, even before I'm looking at the faster service, I'm looking at the cost savings that we're gonna have. I know it's gonna, it's, it's gonna take Steve's and Steve's gonna hardly have any telephone a month, so.
Um, my thought is making a motion to approve up to four hundred dollars for the Xfinity. Knowing that it'll be less than that, but just that it'll be as much, not more than what we're currently paying.
For all three?
Yes, yes, for the.
A combination of all three?
All three.
All right, let me write that down. Four hundred for a combo.
But we don't have that quote yet, so.
Is it gonna be a burner phone?
I, I, I haven't had any thus far and I switched mine over right away. And I haven't had any issues of having it and it'll stay in the op. It'll stay in the office. It's not going to my house on the weekends. Um, so. But I, it'll take messages and all of that, but I haven't had any issues with it in my office. And I switched over right away and Peggy switched over also. So we haven't had any trouble. Okay, on the combo of the three up two. And if it, if it looks like it's gonna go over that, I won't, I won't do it until we get the uh, everything together, okay?
So make a motion to approve up to four hundred dollars, the switch to Xfinity, one combo, combination between town hall, sewer and Steve's.
Okay, I like that.
Aye.
And we will be getting rid of that phone altogether and we'll be getting rid of your phone altogether and then you'll have only the, you'll have only yourselves.
Okay, have you thought about just disconnecting your phone too?
It is? Did you say it was an option? Uh, yeah, no, we're not gonna do that. Uh, we, we won't. Yeah, no, thank you. Okay. Next thing that I have, thank you very much. Uh, next thing I have is I got a call from the D L G F, which is the Department of Local Government Finance. Uh, Ryan Burke, who's the Assistant Budget Director uh, for uh, D L G F, uh, called and asked me if I would be a pilot town for their new system for budgeting. I agreed and so that means that I'll be doing double budgets this year. I'll be doing it the old way. And then I'll be doing it the new way also. The only thing, I just wanted you to know that that's what's going on in my office as far as budgets are concerned. Uh, not that it will affect the town's budget at all. It's just that he asked very few towns to be pilots and I was one of them and. Uh, not that it will affect the town's budget at all. It's just that he asked very few towns to be pilots and I was one of them and. I've known Ryan for a long time and I was very pleased that he reached out and, and, uh, asked me to do that, so. Uh, we will be doing that and, uh, budget season is upon us. Uh, which means that, uh, coming up, uh, this week, uh, starting the fourteenth. I will, my office will be closed between one and four thirty. Probably all the way up to four, uh, to five. I have a budget workshop. And it is, uh, it's gonna be on, uh, it's gonna be on Zoom, so, uh, I don't have to go anyplace, just right in there. Then on the fifteenth, my classes start at nine thirty in the morning and run all the way up until three. So Peggy and I will be in those budget classes and Clerk Treasurer School. On the sixteenth, which is Friday. They will have classes from nine o'clock in the morning until twelve thirty. That will be geared. To Clerk Treasurers and Council Members. Uh, I am inviting you all to come here on Friday morning if you have the opportunity. At any time in there and, uh. Uh, attend that, uh, budget class for council members. If you can, great. If you can't, that's fine.
Is it always this time of year or?
Yeah, because I've already.
It's starting July, basically, I mean, January, July.
I've already started budgets for this year, uh, because there's some budgets that I can start working on. And I guess that's probably why Ryan called me, because he knows I'm that way. And I'm gonna really have to ramp everything up so that I can get everything done for Ryan and get everything done for the DLGF, for the town.
Yeah, I've, um, I won't be able to this week, but I'd like to know in the future, just to like plan around that then.
Sure. And, and what I'll do is I'll see if I can't get, I'll see if I can't get a, uh, recording. And then that way you can, uh, of course you won't be able to ask, ask any questions, but at least you'll know what everything, what was talked about, okay?
And Bob, I would, I mean, mentioning that same thing, cause I mean, I mean, you can't make it, I, there's pop where I might not be here, but. I do know, which I think could benefit the council, you took time one time to reckon all of us and whenever how we build our budget here.
Okay.
And I think if we could work that out somewhere, would be a great benefit for the council.
Okay, I will do that and I'll do that as soon as I know from the DLGF. How I'm doing it. Sure, I will. I'll get, I'll, I'll send it out like, um, um, three or four weeks. But as soon as, uh, as soon as, uh, the LGF lets me know what I'm doing, then yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Cause I mean, it is a benefit.
And other than that, I don't think I have anything.
I just, I don't have anything right now.
The only thing I have, and Tony, if you would, um, you said the days you're gonna be out next week, can you just text us so we know which days? You are, are out and if anybody, you know, like if Bruce is covering it for the morning or whatever, what day it is for, that would always help us out. If someone happened to call and say, hey. How long is the whole term, he's not here, you know? So, and cause Steve usually, you know, keeps us in track of vacation days out and stuff like that. It's just, it's a benefit to the, to the council. Hey, anybody out there have anything? It looks like it is eight twelve and meeting is adjourned. So anyway.